I would like to open, call the Board of Selectmen meeting open for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. Before we get started, I would ask if we all stand and salute the flag.
A pledge to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I just want to make a note that Selectman Mr. Brian Dick is literally sick as a dog. He was gonna come in here, but we told him he couldn't to give us all germs, so we're all thankful for that. So I know he's watching, so, oh, for a speedy recovery for Mr. Brian Dick. All right, that said, let's jump into scheduled items. Our first item of business was pole petition, East Street and Chandler Street intersection.
To open a hearing?
And it's a public meeting, do I have a motion to waive the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second that.
Have a motion, a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, and just state your name for the business, for the record?
John Tilly National Grid Electric. I'm here to talk about the job and speak in favor of it, if anybody has any questions.
Can you just highlight the job?
Sure. What we're gonna be doing is Tucksbury's gonna be widening the road, so for them to widen the road, we're gonna be pushing back the pole that's at the corner, and to do that, we're gonna put a brand-new pole, and then put a pole across the street to bring the wires and communication across the street to Chandler Street.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Ms. Stronach?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I would like for the public's information that this is something that the town is looking to do. This is, we are the petitioners, is that correct, Mr. Montori?
We made the request, yes.
So, obviously, and we are also reserving space on this poles for our fire, police, telephone, and municipality belonging, so I just want people to know that, because I know that people get nervous about us adding poles and not taking poles down, so I just want to make sure that people understand that this is to benefit the town.
Very good call out. Any other questions, concerns from the board?
I have a quick question. When do you anticipate, if you are approved, that you'll start construction to move these, and how long do you think it'll take?
Well, once we get approved, we usually schedule it within a few weeks to move it along, but we obviously need the town's approval first, and then usually it's a three-week schedule, and we'll move the poles out of the way so the town can do their work.
Does it taste like just a day job?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we could put up two poles, and we'll have crews out there, and we'll, obviously, there'll be safety officers at the intersection to make sure if anybody's crossing or any traffic issues, so, take care of that. And there won't be any added poles, actually, we're taking down two poles and adding two poles, exactly even.
Thank you, great, good point, thank you.
Crapman?
No, I read through it. This is a benefit to the town, it's relocating a pole, it's to widen the intersection, I'm in favor of it, so.
Okay, very good, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'd like to see if there's any rebutters for this specific item to come up, speak now. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the poll as presented for poll number 25, and poll number 20, as presented on East Street and Chandler Street.
Very good, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a nice night.
All right, perfect timing. The next scheduled item for business is liquor license change of hours application at Wamisette Lanes. Mr. McCarron, name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody, my name's Donnie McLaren, with Wamisette Lanes.
All right, wanna just kinda state your, state the request?
So, we are looking to get a, an adjustment to our current liquor license, a permanent change on our Sunday license, along with a one-day license exception for a few of our special events that we have upcoming.
Okay, I read through, well, I'm gonna open up to the board, and I'm sure, we might have some questions for this one, but at this time, what I'd like to do is open it up to the board, and potentially, we have some questions for Mr. Montori on behalf of this request, because we did follow up with the A B C C, you know, for the Commonwealth, you know, the higher order bit authority for this, but at this time, I'd like to open up to the board for any questions.
I don't have questions regarding this, I think it's very self-explanatory, so I appreciate that, but I did have some questions on the hours, and I know that we have asked Mr. Montori to do some homework on that, and he has provided us with that information, and basically, I believe that the 10 o'clock hours is not something that we are able to grant on a Sunday, is that correct?
You can, you can grant a 10 o'clock opening on a Sunday, you can't grant anything prior to 10 o'clock.
Okay. And we cannot do single-day time slots, is that correct?
Correct. In the past, the board has allowed for single event, single events to start before 10 o'clock, or allow serving before 10 o'clock on a Sunday, or before they allow the time during the week. From talking to the A B C C, this year, they indicated that you cannot do that for someone that has a liquor license, it either has to be part of the permanent license, or not done at all, so even though that was done last year, that was a mistake on my part for not having better information for the board.
And what are the current hours now?
For the, for Sundays, it's, I should pull it up.
It'd be noon time?
It starts at noon time, and during the week, I believe it starts at 11:00.
Correct.
And you're only looking to change Sunday to 10:00? You're leaving Monday through Friday at 11:00?
Well, with that information that I just received from Mr. Montori, I would assume to go for 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, and then I would push for a 8:00 for the Monday through Saturday.
I don't think, okay, but Mr. Montori, keep us honest here, I don't believe that, is it all or nothing for seven days a week, meaning?
It's all or nothing for seven days a week.
So essentially, if we, if, if we approve the application, it would be for seven days a week from 10:00 a.m. through 1, 10:00 a.m. on Sundays, seven days a week to 1:00 a.m. And it, right, Mr. Donnie, it's your open establishment to 1:00 a.m., correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in the past, just to update, you know, we evidently, evidently, we followed up with the A B C C, and they said, you know, we couldn't grant a special for eight, you know, and before I know, the board has done that, so, kind of a different shift, based on, based on Massachusetts General Laws, 138 and 12, Massachusetts General Laws, 138 and 15, and General Laws, 138. They apply it to restaurants, package stores, and clubs, so it's a little bit confusing, but the bottom line, it's either seven days a week, 10:00 a.m., you know, to actually 1:00 a.m., actually, you could extend it to 2:00 a.m., but in this case, it's 1:00 a.m. So that's clear as mud, right?
That's, that's very clear to me right now, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stronach, any additional questions?
So, yeah, so I'm not sure, the seven-day thing, that's the question I have, because I think Sunday is an outlier, so Sunday, we can open at 10:00, the board can grant that on a, to a petitioner, but then the Monday through Saturday thing is consistent, it's the same hour, so Monday through Saturday could be different than the Sunday.
That's how I understand it as well.
Oh, I see, so.
Yeah, not, not seven, six days, six days a week, so Monday through Saturday.
So six out of the seven days, you can open up at eight, Sunday, earliest you can open up is 10:00.
It's 10:00, okay, very good, thank you for the clarification, thank you.
But, this request that we have in front of us is for Sunday at 10:00, and then it requests some individual license for Saturdays at eight, which we can't even discuss, and...
You can't approve one, right?
We don't have the authority to do that.
So if he wants to request a change in his hours for the rest of the week, he can do that right now.
Yes, and that's what I would like to do.
To what time?
8:00 a.m. for the six days, and then 10:00 a.m. on the Sunday.
And we can do that through a verbal right now?
Yeah, yeah, he's, he had it written, but new information came to light, so we can...
Okay. So, I'm just gonna speak for myself, and I am not in support of having alcohol served at 8:00 o'clock, I think I've been pretty consistent with that, so, I'm just going to say that I'm not comfortable with an 8:00 a.m. start at our restaurants for this particular item, so, I would like to listen to my other board members on Sunday, in terms of what they do, I, 8:00 a.m. is just a little too early for my own comfort zone.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Crapman?
I have a number of questions. I understand that, you know, you're looking to open on Sundays for specific things, so, if we were to grant a 10:00 a.m. license on Sundays, would you use it every Sunday for 10:00 a.m., or would it be for specific, like, as you are listing here, requesting Mother's Days brunches? I understand you would have the ability to do it, but would you do it all year long?
Yeah, right now, we're just looking to get creative with the summer season, with going with, using the patio and the brunch season, so I can't guarantee that we will use it every Sunday, I don't think it's likely, but this certainly gives us the flexibility, which helps us better operate our business, and creates that environment for the competition in different restaurants in other towns that are doing the brunch services.
Now, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m., what would you envision opening at 8:00 a.m. for?
That will be something that rarely happens, as you can see, we only have a few events covering two months' worth, and it would just be for really special events, it wouldn't be our general Monday or Tuesday, we're gonna be serving alcohol, it's really just for our special events.
You would just do it on when you had?
Fundraisers.
Fundraisers, special events, those type of things that you've been coming in front of us for.
Exactly, because our restaurant...
And asking for special licenses.
Yep, and our restaurant doesn't open until 11:00 anyways, on regular business, so, it would, again, it would only be for special events.
I have to agree with my representative, my colleague here with the, talking about 8:00 a.m. every day.
Right.
I'm not in favor of that, but...
Neither am I.
But if there's certain events, and we've granted them in the past, but coming with new information about how we go about this, you know, we have granted them for special events, as long as it stays to special events, and, and there's some sort of notice, can we require that we get notification of when they...
We can ask that.
...having those events?
Yeah, we can ask if we can put that on the license, but I just, it's hard for me to answer right now. It's something we can ask, and, do you have any events between now and our next meeting?
The only ones, when is your next meeting, May 6th?
Probably meet during town meeting, that, yeah, May 6th.
As of right now, our next event would be May 18th, so, no.
It's time to look at it, bring it back, talk to the A B C C.
That's for annual town meeting, we can still take to your business property.
Yeah, as long as we have it on the agenda.
Okay.
I do have a question regarding that, Mr. Chairman. How would we enforce something like that? That's always my concern, I hate to set a precedent where we're authorizing a license that is duly obligated and, through the A B C, allows us to make that, and it's a general statement, and then we're putting a stipulation. I understand that you're gonna ask A B C C, but how would we potentially monitor that? So, I, I just think of, in terms of some of the rebutters coming in saying, "Well, I didn't know that they were gonna have this event," and is it our job then to notify people when those special events are, so, if we could talk about that as well, I mean, it sounds to me like this isn't gonna be potentially necessarily resolved today, but I worry about putting something in, forward that I have to then be accountable to monitor from my perspective, so, I just wanna...
No, it's a good point, I can put that all together when I report back to the board.
Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Crapman, any other questions?
No, like I said, you know, we, we've granted these in the past, you know, I think it's very clear that we are very strict in enforcing these, and making sure that the residents, I mean, we could try something and see, or we can, you know, to discuss how this works, but, you know, if we have any problems in this, you know, we can then revoke if we were to grant something like this, but I don't wanna have a problem.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure that there isn't an issue, I don't want it a regular, everyday 8:00 a.m., I think, from my perspective, I think I'm making it very clear, that, you know, if there was special events and things that we've done in the past, but, you know, I would like to see some sort of way that, you know, you can notify either the police department or notice the, or the Board of Selectmen, that these are the type of events, and that it'd be your responsibility for posting that these are the type of things that are going on, that, so this way, we could get the notice out to the public that these type of events are going on.
Yeah, I have no problem doing that. Externally, we do it internally on our board, and inside our center anyways, we're already creating the documentation for, so it would be not an issue if I had to forward it to the police department, or the town, or the selectmen, however you'd want me to do it, I got no problem with that.
The key is being a good neighbor, and that's that, we wanna keep the neighbors happy, we wanna keep businesses happy, but, you know, we have to find a happy medium in there, and just make sure that we don't have problems, so far, I don't think we have, but let's keep it that way.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Very good. Ms. Go up.
Hi, I have a couple of things. Thank you for bringing this forward. The Saturday hours were sort of a surprise today, I was prepared to talk about Sunday, but Saturday was new, so I'll give you my thoughts first on Sunday. I, I think that it does make the, your establishment competitive with the brunch business that happens everywhere else, and if you wanna go to brunch, it's hard to do that necessarily in Tucksbury, if you're looking for a celebration or a mimosi, I know, I have many friends who go to all different places, and you have to go really out of town to some other communities, you have a lovely establishment, and so I think that you tend to be a very reputable business, and you work well with the community, you work well with the town, and, so I think that I have really no issue with Sunday at 10:00 a.m. I wanted to ask you a couple of things about Saturday. Your Saturday events are all 10:00 a.m., except for one, so I wanted to ask you, what, what are you doing for this, which sounds so much fun, the annual fat man triathlon, and, and why do you need to serve alcohol at 8:00 a.m.?
I think it's more of the way that the event has been in the past. Part of the earlier liquor serving is mostly just fundraiser-based, to try to attract more attention to it, and just...
Do you typically like a sponsor? So my brother, you wouldn't know this from looking at me, is a marathoner, all right, and so he runs in lots of races, and sometimes they're brewery-sponsored, or they're vineyard-sponsored, or some, something like that, and so at the end of the race, there's, you know, this kind of thing that happens, and so I'm curious, like, what's the run of your event? Is that the sort of thing that has to happen at the beginning of the event, or is it worth making up at the end of the event, which might necessitate a different hour?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how they're running their event this year, it just gives them flexibility to wherever they start, and however they finish their event, but that's, that's pretty much controlled by them, I'm not sure how they plan on running their event specifically.
Yeah, depends on whether we give this license or not, a little bit.
I would say so, yes.
Okay, and since it's a sort of all or nothing requirement with the Saturday, and then, I had a question about the Tucksbury High School, is that a wrestling event?
Not...
Tucksbury High School Wrestling?
Yep.
What's that?
So, that would...
A fundraiser for the group?
It'd be a cornhole tournament that we've hosted ever since we've opened, we do the wrestling, the football, and that's all it is, just a fundraiser, and they do raffles and brackets for the cornhole tournament.
I come from the school committee once upon a time where, you know, we didn't, we didn't serve alcohol at events with kids and so forth, so it's...
Yeah, it's not like a, it's not a kid's event, yeah.
Yeah, good. Thank you for just clarifying that. As far as notification, I think it's good for you to notify the board about some of these events, as my colleagues have stated, but I'm concerned about the town advertising for private businesses, I'm not a fan of that, once we do it for one business, we have to do it for somebody else, so I think there should be a requirement of notification for some of these really early morning events, but I don't know that, I don't know what our requirement is or should be for publication of that information, or just, because then it's sort of, where are we advertising, and where are we, you know, what is the line there, so that, I think deserves further thought on our part. I think that's, those are all my questions, right now, so, thank you.
Okay, very good, so I'll jump in. So, at the end of the day, we're not taking, we're not touching the subject matter of Saturday, correct? Can all agree on that, correct? This application is for Sundays.
To bring it back, if, later, if the petitioner wants to...
So we're just talking about Sunday, so I won't get too far into that. Donnie, what time do you, what time do you open on Sundays for your regular business?
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m., and you said typically, the restaurant portion opens at 11:00?
Yes.
So I think I do like the idea of a posting, you know, that's the thing, if we do grant it, again, I'm thinking ahead, not that we are...
And that's how it is currently, we'll end up adjusting that, and we'll be launching a breakfast menu, and feeding people even at 10:00 in the morning, we currently do right now.
But I'm saying, would it be seven, would it be seven days a week, or really, the strategy would be to, on special occasions, to, you know, to essentially open the bar early, like, for instance, in 30 days, if it's granted, I'm thinking ahead, just asking a question, would you essentially open the restaurant slash, and serve alcohol every day at 10:00, or again, are you just really reserving it for, let's call it a special occasion?
Just a special occasion.
Okay. You know, for me, you know, this town sometimes has the perception of reality, sometimes we're hot on businesses, you know, and we are 80% residential, and we need businesses to come in, 'cause then they can offset some of the taxes that our residents are burdened with, you know, each and every year, so, I don't think this is a one-size-fits-all, as a matter of fact, I think your business in town is probably the most, unique business in town, where it's entertainment, you open the doors early, so people can have fun, and you do open the restaurant at 11:00, so for me, I really don't have an issue with 10:00 o'clock, especially if it's gonna be for special occasions, 'cause I think your business is so unique. Now, if another business came our way, I'm just saying, I'd have to analyze the business and say, are they gonna open their restaurants early now, so someone can have a cocktail and serve, see what I mean? So I don't believe this is gonna set the precedent for all, 'cause that's how unique I think your business is, so, again, just for me, in my thinking, I don't have an issue with the Saturday for 8:00, that's, we'll save that for another day, 'cause we're not discussing that. For that one there, it's kind of a little question mark.
That's fine.
Yep, but again, for me, I think your business is very unique, and I love the idea of a posting, hey, we're having this event, you know, you copy the town manager, and he can copy the police, just as a heads-up, and copy the board, so we do know. So, again, that's just my, my thought on it, I don't think it's going to set a precedent for all the businesses in town that have a liquor or beer license, again, that's just my view. So, any other questions or thoughts from the board?
I have one more question.
Ms. Stronach?
I just wanna be clear, this 10:00 a.m. for Sundays, you, this is not a special occasion, you are looking to launch a brunch menu on Sunday for the summer, so this will be every Sunday for the summer months, is that correct?
I would consider it as, as brunch, so that's kind of a special event for us, we're not, we won't have brunch every single day, every single Sunday.
Oh, you're not gonna have brunch every Sunday, so I'm just asking the question...
Yeah, this is specifically for the summer season, that's what we're trying to do, get creative with the summer.
Right, so what do you consider the summer season, like, the Memorial Day to Labor Day, is that kind of, so that would be brunch?
Yeah, exactly, I think Mother's Day is pretty much when we're looking to launch it.
Okay, got it, but it will be every Sunday, I just wanna be, I, I'm fine with the thought of you're looking at it as a brunch thing, and I agree with my colleagues, and I would say that there are some other businesses in town, I actually have a friend who looked to do a shower at a business in town, and declined because it was an early morning shower, and they wouldn't be able to serve mimosas at the shower, so, I do think that other people will be coming forward, and we can analyze those at the time, but, this, when you're saying special occasion and brunch, you are meaning on Sundays during the summer kicking off on Mother's Day, correct?
Correct, yeah, and providing how business exceeds expectations, we can, we'll take a look at it and see how everything runs after that, special events, or if we got a baby shower, same idea, we'd, we'd consider doing that too, as well.
And, Mr. Montori, when we grant a liquor license, it's not for a set period of time... And, Mr. Montori, when we grant a liquor license, it's not for a set period of time, it's an annual liquor license.
Annual liquor license, it said hours in that annual.
When we make the adjustment to this liquor license, when would it expire for this year? Does it, they run in January, is that?
December 31st.
December 31st.
December, so yeah, Jan, we, we'd have to look at this again in January, correct?
You'll probably take this up late November, early December.
Okay.
But what I, listening to your line of questions and the answers that were given, similar to what Mr. Krabman has asked, I'm going to ask A, B, C, see if you can put a timeframe on the liquor license for when Sunday hours may be 10 o'clock.
Okay.
So if he was doing it from Mother's Day to Labor Day, could you put that specific timeframe on there? It's just an option in the future for the board.
Yep. That's great, that would be good.
Good question.
Okay, very good conversation.
I appreciate that.
Just, just Mr. Krabman's point, at the end of the day, just for the board, you know, as much as the application's in front of us, we always reserve the right to pull it back at any time, you know what I mean? But...
Can't do that without sharing.
So very, very, very good conversation. So, any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion to approve the Sunday hours, specifically just Sunday, beginning at 10:00 AM, to modify the hours on Sundays from beginning at 10:00 AM on the liquor license, and we can see how it goes through throughout the season, and we take a look at it at the end of the year again, see if there's any issues, and we can see how this summer goes.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Please stick to my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We have to take a motion on the rest of the, for the weekday things to postpone, or...
That wasn't in front of us, right? It was just for Saturday, right?
Just wait till the next meeting, I'll put it back on the agenda.
Come in front of us, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I would say that we're taking no action on the additional requests, for the record.
Jesse did make a verbal request, so I just didn't know if we had to take a vote on it.
Make that motion for the record, Mr. Krabman.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to table the request to our next meeting for the Monday through Saturday hours.
I have a motion and a second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, that brings us to 7:20, it brings us to the third item, scheduled item is the street acceptance request for Winterberry Lane. Mr. Montori, would you just like to highlight that?
Yeah, so this is something that was brought forward last year. The planning board has approved the layout and the acceptance of the road. The town engineer and the DPW have approved the layout, or recommended the layout to the board, everything's in order. And recommend that the board approve the layout and recommend acceptance of the road at town meeting.
Okay, just to keep me honest, this is not a public hearing for this particular item, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I didn't miss it, okay? I usually miss those things, very good. And I did see it was unanimous, and this was been, you know, I do recall a town meeting that we actually postponed, the residents postponed it because of water issues and a lot of particular issues that you guys...
Yeah, so at the last town meeting, the residents of Winterberry Lane didn't ask for this to be held. The residents of an abutting road or driveway asked because of flooding problems. We're still trying to work on that issue, but, you know, the reality, but the layout of the road for Winterberry Lane, the road itself, all the work that needed to be done per the, the plans that went through the planning board process have been met, so there's no reason not to accept this road.
Okay, very good, and I had a question from a resident on that very issue, and I informed the resident that at the planning board it was unanimous, and I saw no additional action, no additional questions, and it was a unanimous vote, so I just wanted, there was a few residents questioning if that ever got fixed, because I recall there was discussion at town meeting, that's all.
We're still working on it.
Okay. All right, with that being said, any other questions, comments from the board?
I'd just like to thank the town manager for the very good communication on this, because there were a lot of questions, so I appreciate the due diligence and the back and forth, so, thank you.
And to the residents of Winterberry Lane for bringing that up, okay, very good. That being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept Winterberry Lane as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Just, Mr. Chairman, why don't you just go back, I'm just looking at the, this was a notice, public hearing.
This was, so I'm going to pause, see that? I told you, I always forget. So at this time, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to, to, at this time, so the board, any other discussion from the board on this matter?
Wait and see if there's any public comment.
Right, so I'm going to move, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion to waive the public hearing reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So I'm going to, any other questions before the board, before I open up to the public, for the residents? Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to open up the residents. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Back to the board.
And then there was, there was a motion in the board's packet to...
Yep, you want me to read it?
Well, I, I wanted, I was waiting to see if there was any public comment. So, were the abutters notified that there would be a public hearing tonight? Did they know?
No, I don't think the abutters would be notified. I'd have to double check on that.
Yeah, well, the only reason is because, as moderator, I thought it was pretty extraordinary that one individual stood up at town meeting and turned the whole meeting around on its head and said, "We want to wait and see what the, what the town does about it." And, you know, so that's why I was curious, to see if they were able to come or if they were aware. I mean, I know we posted, and this was posted in our original agenda, so I don't know that they would be looking for it. And I understand that the, the town engineer, Mr. Hardeman, has been working with folks to kind of look at the drainage issue there.
Yeah, so, I have met with the residents on that. It's not a town-accepted road that is having the issue. So I've met with the residents on their road, the town engineer is pricing out and laying out possible drainage solution. We're just not sure exactly what's causing the drainage problem, and how much of it existed, and how much of it is because of this new project. We met with the, the developer of the, of Winterberry Lane, so we've had meetings on site, we've had meetings in my office, I mean, we're going to try to, yeah, we're going to try to address it as much as we can, but, you know, we've been working that through, but at the end of the day, it shouldn't hold up the actual acceptance of the road for the residents onto Winterberry. We should try to keep them separate.
And then, why is the other road not accepted?
Because we never built to town standards.
Exactly. It was not built to town.
No, it's more of a driveway.
I see what you're saying.
Private driveway.
Okay, all right, so it's a little, so it's a long driveway or something like that?
It's a long driveway, yes.
I see, all right, thank you, I appreciate that.
A strong occasion.
And it is to the residents' benefit, I just want to make sure, I mean, it's always to the residents' benefit when we accept it as a public way, because then they are entitled to the services on that road.
Correct, I mean, they'll, the big issue is plowing the road.
Right.
And things like that, so right now, the developer would be responsible for that, or the homeowners themselves would have to figure out a way to have the road plowed during the winter. So that's the biggest issue, when it comes to public safety issues, we're still going to respond regardless, but the big issue is just public works type situations.
I am going to say that having a road impassable because of plowing is a safety concern in my opinion, so. With that, I will continue with my motion to approve the acceptance of the public way as laid out and presented. Do I need to read this into the record?
Yes.
Having complied with statutory requirements by conducting a public hearing after notice to the abutters, but we did not do that, you say?
We might have, I have to check.
Can we put that as amendment, just, can we put that as amendment for approval, so if there was a notice, you know, if there was a notice that we can...
I'm going to make a new amendment to table this and notify the abutters, is this urgent?
Why don't you do this? Hold this to the end of the meeting, I'm going to find out right now.
Okay.
Even better.
That's good.
Okay. All right, very good, that brings us to the residence section. At this time, any residents like to, any comments, public comments from the residents? Okay, seeing none, that's going to move us to new business. The first order of business is the local historic district study committee appointment. At this time, we're going to table that, what we're going to do, we're going to appoint, we were going to appoint the individual as, on the committee, however, the committee should be filled, so we're just going to, we're going to table that until our next selecta meeting, and just to make sure that the committee is, does have a vacancy for that particular committee. So, next order of business is we're going to recognize the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So, this is something I became aware of a couple weeks ago. April 14th through 20th is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we, as a board, would like to acknowledge our hardworking public safety 911 dispatchers. Our town 911 dispatchers are tireless, they take pride in dispatching emergency professionals and life-saving assistance to Tewksbury residents in a professional manner. We want to extend our thanks for all the sacrifices they make to create a better and safer world for the public. And I would like to read into the record the names of our public safety dispatchers, which I just moved around on my table here, so bear with me. I apologize if I mispronounce any names. Our full-time dispatchers include Joseph Eberle, Elias Chaya, Ted Sullivan, Kim Griffin, Karen Poisson, John Juvelis, Sarah Sibella, Janice Judd, and Jason McNamara. Our part-time dispatchers include Matthew Jarrock, Peter Murray, Joseph Newton, Sean Sylvia, William Tarpe, and Erica Vazella. Over my almost 20 years in Tewksbury, I've had to call 911 now and then, and they've always been a voice of reassurance and guidance in moments when you're not in a good place. So, I think it's wonderful that we can extend our appreciation to them this evening. Thank you.
Very good. I'll just piggyback on and just say, truly incredible work over there, you know, we all watch shows on TV, but these, you know, these individuals truly take calls that are unbelievable and chilling, bone chilling, they make their hair in the back of your neck stand up, as real as it gets, so they do an incredible job, and keep me honest here, but I believe there's only six dispatches for the police, correct?
Well, not on at all times, not on...
Right, but I'm saying, that's a very small number.
Too small number.
For this town to be a very progressive, incredible police force to have just that short number covered 24/7, 365, and like I said, there's a lot of calls online, and you can actually hear the calls that come in, it's the real deal, it's incredible, they do incredible work, and, you know, so that's, that's a very good call out, and we will present them with citations down the road, but that was a very good call out, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, that brings us to the, we're going to have some fun now, on the new business, we're going to review the annual and special town meeting, oh, Mr. Stronach?
The Affordable Trust.
Oh, right, okay, Mr., we're actually going to take that off, and Mr. Montori, just a quick update there, please?
Yes, I'm going to ask that this be tabled to a future meeting. We received some information from DHCD regarding this particular unit at Merrimack Meadows. I spoke with the assistant town manager about this issue today, and I've asked that, told him we'll hold this and have him speak with the local housing partnership before it comes back to the board of selectmen.
Very good.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table the buy-down participation at 142 Merrimack Meadow Lane.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, now, that brings us to the review of the annual special town meeting warrant. So what we'll do, Mr. Montori, is, this is not a public hearing, I do believe we have a hearing tomorrow for the FinCom, which is a public hearing, I know the planning board already had their public hearing a few weeks back. However, this board always allows, if residents come, we always allow folks to grab the microphone, because that's how we, that's how we honor the residents here, so it's not a public hearing, however, if you raise your hand and want to speak to any of the particular articles, we welcome it. So, with that...
Just, before you go into the articles, in the past, because the warrant can take some time, they're usually residents or petitioners here for a particular article, they're either the petitioner or have a representative speaking on their behalf, did you want to take them out of order and let them go now, and then we can go on with the rest?
We were on the same page, that's what I have, exactly, because sometimes this is going to be long, and I know the Bruins are on. So, with that being said, Mr. Montori, if you want to kick it off into the folks that are actually petitioned in here, that's a good way to go.
Yeah, so I think Attorney Plunkett represents maybe all the petitioners?
All of them.
Yeah.
Okay, what particular number, and again, just for the residents, we do have packets that were mailed out, so they can follow along at home.
And I would also like to note that the supplemental information handout is ready, is that on the website?
Yeah, it should be online by Friday.
Should be online by Friday.
To get all the comments on it.
I find that to be very useful.
That's like the, the Clifton version of our entire packet, that is, is good stuff, it's very good for summaries.
Mr. Chairman, I am representing the proponents, or, I'm actually one of the proponents of Articles 36, 37, 38, 39, and 41. I'm sorry, 40. No, I'm sorry, 41.
One more time on that?
Two, three, four, 36 through 41.
There's no 41, it's 40.
Is it 40?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a new number.
Okay.
36, 37, 38, 39, and 40, correct?
Mr. Chairman, so I think, because there's, I don't know what, you're looking at a null warrant, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40.
Yep, I thought, I was like, I was surprised 35 was a warrant.
Numbering changed.
All right, I'm already confused, let's go one at a time.
35.
Even better.
It's James Endellis.
He's looking at, well, the planning board had, there was different numbering, because we took an article off.
We'll go, like I said, let's just go in order, so for this particular one?
Okay, yeah, so we're off by one, so...
Right.
Start with Article 35, the Kittrid, Kittrid Jav...
Yeah. Yep. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, David Plunkett. First article we're discussing here tonight then is Article 35. This is a request to change a parcel of land that's on Kittrid Javno from heavy industrial to heavy industrial one. On the plan, parcel is located here, this is Walmart area, this is the Penny Junkyard.
Can you just take the microphone, so people at home can hear you, because this is ready for a town meeting, so, that would be great, thank you, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you. So, basically, we have a situation where the parcel that were, is the subject matter of this warrant article, is located behind Walmart, to the side of the Penny Junkyard. Okay, thank you. Makes it one easier, thank you very much. So it's Walmart, the junkyard, isolated, 1.8 acres of land, is already building on Basically, the, when the town implemented the HI-1 district, it was for a purpose, and that purpose was to recognize the fact that the intent, at one point when we took the automotive use, certain aspects of the automotive use out of the HI district, was because we wanted to take it off of our main, you know, thoroughfare, Route 38 zone. And basically, we created HI-1, which the differences that we, between the HI and the HI-1 were very limited. It took two items that were permitted uses of right, sale of retail, retail sale of alcoholic beverages, and retail, other retail sales that were, were yes in the heavy industrial, and changed it to planning board special permit. And they took the motor vehicle light service, motor vehicle general and body repair, and took it from a no to planning board special permit. And again, it's the idea that, you know, there was some reference earlier on about the need for the town to expand its, you know, commercial base, and for a very good purpose. Expand your commercial base, you expand your tax revenue, you expand your tax revenue from the side of the payors that are not demanding the town services, and the recipients, beneficiaries are the residents, that it allows us to enjoy living here at a tax rate that's affordable. So, so that's basically it in a nutshell, it's a very isolated parcel of land, it's perfect location for what was intended here, it's off of the main thoroughfare, nobody can see it, perfect location for that type of use, and gives the owner the expanded right to be able to compete. And this did receive at the public hearing unanimous support of the planning board, there was a 5-0 vote to support the approval of this at the town meeting. And in fact, there was one resident in the area that actually showed and spoke before the planning board that night, who was in, you know, in the media, I don't know if she was a director butler, or she was in the immediate vicinity, and she talked in support of, of this proposal. So, with that, I would say it's a perfect location, it makes sense, it's what the intent of the HI-1 district is, was implemented to begin with, and would look for the support of the Board of Selectmen to go hand-in-hand with the unanimous support of the planning board.
Questions, comments for Article 35 from the board?
Yep. Very briefly, I was in attendance at that planning board meeting and heard that conversation and that resident speak in favor of this article, so I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you. Stronach?
I, too, was in attendance at that meeting and did hear that as well. I typically defer to the planning board for planning board articles, so while I would support this, if, I would defer to the planning board, and they did, you said it was unanimous, I believe it was?
Yes.
That's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Kratman?
No, I also was at that meeting, so it seems like the whole Selectmen Board was there. But, yeah, I agree, we should defer to the planning board, my recommendation, but...
I was not there, but I got the Clippers watch on TV.
It was a long meeting.
Like you said, with the abouters, so we typically, we typically defer these to the planning board, but what's the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion to defer Article 35 to the planning board for a town meeting.
I will second that.
Motion, and I have a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Next.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Chairman, is a matter of logistics, Article 36 and 37 actually go hand-in-hand, because it's the same, related to the same parcel of land, it was for the purpose, the applicant for the same parcel of land, and at the planning board meeting, you know, we did take it as putting both articles on the table at the same time, because the discussion will be the same fact pattern. So if we could do that? Mr. Chairman, board members, with me tonight is Mr. Joe Phelan, a longtime member of the town of Tuxbury Business Community, very well-respected member of our business community, and have been, had served 20 years on the planning board, well-respected in terms of a person that says he's gonna do something, he does it, and usually goes, the town is very lucky that we do have people within the town that actually do what they're supposed to do and above, and Joe is one of those people. So, you know, it's a situation where, you know, again, relative to the last discussion, you know, the need to increase our economic commercial base, you know, for the business people in town, one of the issues that they have is the ability to compete, the ability to compete with other communities, and the nature of Mr. Phelan's property... Again, we have East Street, you have Mr. Phelan's property, this is the Lumber Lane, and you've got the old Muro Pharmacy, you've got the hockey development, you've got the Teamsters trucking area here, and you got, you have the, you know, the multiple commercial heavy industrial use with Mr. Bowley's project in the back there. So this, again, similar to our last discussion, this is something that is in an isolated spot, you know, East Street is here, but you really don't see it. It's an ongoing operation, Mr. Phelan runs a very good development. But the economic reality is that, you know, in this case here, the impetus of this article is that, you know, he has a tenant who's looking to expand, he's looking to expand into a use that would not be allowed under the HI as currently configured, but certainly, if it goes to an HI-1, again, meeting the criteria of what the purpose was, to get it off of Main Street, allow these uses in an area that makes sense, isolated space, give the owner, you know, the ability to compete, ability to meet the needs of actual tenants that are there and who say, hey, I've been here with you, I want to do this, and in this particular situation, granted that, you know, zoning isn't, you know, case-specific, but this is an example of why the town has to be able to, you know, make, have some sort of flexibility to give to the landowner that they're ready to expand, they're ready to move forward with the planning board with the submittal, but if they don't get it, this ability, they're going somewhere else. And so he's got a sharp window of opportunity to be able to do, address, you know, a current member of our business community and expand. So, you know, it's a situation where the proposal here is to allow this type of change, and the adjoining Article 37 is to allow that additional use, which would incorporate the, by automotive sales and services in an HI zone by special permit. Again, this would be a situation where you're dealing with the criteria that the HI zone is, is likely only gonna be successful or allowed in an area that's isolated anyways. So the type of sales that we're talking about isn't gonna be something that's gonna be dependent on a Route 38, you know, 3,000 cars an hour, that they need that in order to have a viable, you know, business operation. So this is gonna be something that's gonna be able to operate in a isolated location, it's gonna be only by special permit from the planning board, and therefore, you know, you've got those criteria to help you make certain that what happens is gonna be proper and make sense. And again, making sense, it makes sense to allow our business, members of our business community to address needs of their customer base and expand in a, in a proper manner, with oversight by the planning board, and, you know, be able to compete against our surrounding community areas. So that, that, that would be the purpose of both Articles 36 and 37.
Very good. I'm gonna open up to the board for questions at this time. Ms. Miller?
Really quickly, where's the map? Because that map's not in the warrant, are you planning on printing that out for a town meeting?
I think it is in, yes, it's on the next page, 32, isn't that, is that?
That's 32.
Oh, no, well, I'm sorry, because the... I thought that there was a map submitted, but if not, we'll, we'll run off maps and make certain that they're available at the door.
There's no possible way to figure out what, what it's for.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's no, there's no map. That was my only question.
All right. Just like a supplemental handout prior to...
Yeah, I, I, what we'll do, we'll make a number of copies, and we can place that the table at the front door and just say, map for Article 37. That's, thank you.
Good.
And the planning board voted unanimously on this as well?
Yes.
I know you didn't mention that, I wanted to mention that.
I'm sorry, I should've, I should've brought that up as a point. At, at the public hearing before the planning board, there was a 5-0 vote in favor of recommendation of adoption of this, of both articles at the town meeting.
I just think that's important for people that are watching to hear that, because, as you know, we typically defer to them, as we just stated.
I've been thinking about the Bruins game, too, so I'm sorry that I, yeah.
That's okay.
Very good. Mr. Kratman?
Don't tell me the score.
I won't. But, no, I was, I was at this meeting, and I, first I wanna thank Mr. Phelan, I know this location, we've had a number of difficulties going up and down this roadway with vehicles traveling through town center, going through, I've seen the majority of his vehicles coming out of this thing, going out and using 93. I don't know if you're instructing all your vehicles to do so, but I do appreciate that, having the vehicles leave and go out toward 93 instead of driving down through the town center, causing the noise, causing the things that we're trying to get away from, I truly appreciate that, I appreciate a good businessman in our town. I'm Chair of Economic Development, and I wanna help people as they're going, but we gotta also look to make sure that the residents are happy as well. But I can see nothing better than to try to help a businessman try to improve his business, especially somebody who's been doing something well in the community, so I thank you.
I have no questions. What is the pleasure of the board for Articles 36 and Article 37?
I move that we defer Article 36 to the planning board.
I'll take Article 36 first. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. I'll vote for Article 37.
I'll make a motion to defer Article 37 to the planning board.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
If we can have, we have the supplemental handouts that we're gonna have up online, if you could get a copy of that map to add to the supplemental, would that be able to go on?
The only thing with the supplemental, we don't usually put petition or article information in them.
Okay, we don't put anything out there, okay, I was just thinking.
It'd be nice, but just, where do we draw the line with petitions?
Then they can, they can hand them out to the town.
But if he gives us copies, we'll hand them out at town meeting, we'll have them table at town meeting.
Yeah, I'll make a number of copies.
Next.
Article 38, I'm sorry, that is not my article, but I know, I believe they were gonna withdraw it, but I'll step aside if no one's here. If not, we'll move to Article 39, this is... Mr. Chairman, board members, this is Mark and Jose Rocha. You probably are very familiar with American Gutter on Route 38. Jose and Mark have, it's been a family-run business in town for 25 years, and we have a situation where their business operation is on Main Street in this parcel here. They, they acquired this parcel, which is the subject matter of the petition, 10,000 square foot parcel of land that used to be the entryway into the back MFD district, which has now been developed and is accessed off of the... Victor Drive, thank you. And they acquired it to help with their business operation, and then it was determined that it's not zoned commercial. So... You know, again, this is a, I think, a common sense approach to, you know, adjusting and reacting to situations to make things make sense. So all along that route there, you have the assisted living to one side, you have the cow wash to the other side, you have Mahone's across the street, you have the industrial business across the street, and you've got the Route 38 corridor, which typically by definition is a commercial parcel with the dimensions with 150-foot frontage, with 390 feet in depth, they make a one-acre parcel of land. So the host corridor is, you know, by and large, commercial. So what we're looking to do is just make that a commercial zone, which it should be anyways, so that that way there, they're able to combine it with their property next door, which was their intent to have that, you know, basically merge into their current property, which is zoned commercial, which is the locus of their business operation, and utilize it and make it more capable of being utilized for the operation of the business. You know, we have been dealing with the town on some issues to address, and, you know, they've been very responsive, and, you know, one of the things that we went before the ZBA for special permits, the, at that hearing, we had a submittal to the ZBA of about 15, 20 letters of recommendation from other members of the Tuxbury Business Community, talking about what great, you know, what a great business they operate, how good they are to others in the community, to other business members. So it's a situation where, again, help a business, do what should be done, it makes sense, and we'd be asking for the support of the Selectmen, and at the planning board meeting, I think it should be pointed out that they voted 5-0 unanimous support to recommend adoption of this at the annual town meeting.
Questions from the board, comments?
My only comment was, again, at the planning board, this came with very little resistance, I don't even think you had a question from the planning board on this, at this meeting, so, I think we're the only article that they didn't have a question on.
Very good. And my only comment is, like, first off, you know, thank you for being very good business owners in town for a long time. My only comment is, you almost have to be Superman to look at this map with your eyes, you know, and I know you have, like, the entire town, so, again, just maybe advice or comments where the next time maybe shorten it up, because the average resident could look at this at a town meeting and say, wait a minute, I'm confused, you know what I mean? It's like tiny.
Yeah. We could do the same thing with this for the other submittal, have at the table, you know, more defined, you know, less focus, a more refined focus point as to identifying the parcel.
Very few have great eyesight like Mr. Kratman, so I think it would be beneficial, so, all right, very good. If there's no other questions on Article 39, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer Article 39 to the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Next, Mr. Plunkett?
The next article, this is Article 40, this is my submittal, and I'm going to be requesting, on the floor of the town meeting, to withdraw this, and, you know, without prejudice. The intent is to try to work with, you know, the town and the zone, master zone committee to see if we can address some of the issues or questions about making the OR district more responsive to the economic realities of development in this area through that, through that committee. So I would request that we would have the support to have a withdrawal without prejudice.
Questions, comments from the board?
I'm glad to hear that, I didn't support this article, so I think that withdrawing it without prejudice is a great idea, and bringing it back to the zoning bylaw committee to do some more work makes sense, it falls in line with our master plan from 2016, because I think that your point is that more needs to be done, and I think that was also the point in the master plan, but I don't necessarily agree with this particular solution, so thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
I would, I am gonna defer to the applicant at town meeting and defer to the town members, I mean, if he's gonna... I mean, if he's going to withdraw it, I would obviously support that, and I do withdraw without prejudice, so I don't, I'm not going to take a recommend action. No action.
No action. There you go.
I have a motion taken, no action, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, I have a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plunkett.
I won't tell you what the score is.
Don't.
Thank you very much.
I'm taping it.
We'll see you in a week.
Someone else who wants to speak?
Okay, I want to ask if there's another petitioner that would like to come forward?
Or comment.
Or comment. Ms. Nancy Reed, name and address for the record.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. My name's Nancy Reed. I'm here as a resident, not as a member of any board or committee. Last week I got my warrant, it was mailed out, thank you, and I was looking through, as I do, and I noticed Article twenty-sixth, and it's regarding printing the warrant, I assume in anticipation for the fall, when the new zoning bylaw needs to be printed, and that's going to be quite burdensome, and so it's totally understandable that the town would want to address that, and so I'm here, not on that matter. The item that sparked my interest was that the content of the article, if it's zoning or general bylaw, if it exceeds three pages, then it wouldn't be printed, it would have a summary. And I thought, you know, it really doesn't take much to get a zoning article that's over three pages, and I was thinking that perhaps ten pages would be a better limit, just to kind of, kind of favor having those bylaws in the book for people to read rather than get a summary. And so I just thought I would come and discuss that with you before I, you know, just kind of popped into town meeting floor and asked for that amendment. And so that's why I decided to come. I had asked Mr. Montori about this as well, and that's pretty much my thought process, and I will probably bring this forward on the floor of town meeting.
Very good.
And I'd love to have your support, but that's another topic.
Very good. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Tronick?
I, I was just going to say, I did ask the town manager, along with my colleagues, when we were getting ready for the zoning, to time to take a look. As residents know, I am a huge proponent of mailing out the town warrant, and I do realize that it comes at an expense, and I do realize that when we prepare for the new zoning changes, it is going to be a very expensive price tag to do this. I also like to call out in the article that even though we are limiting the number of pages, and I would, you know, talk to Mr. Montori about the three pages, and I don't know if you want to, I mean, I don't think tonight is the discussion point of this, but I would like to say that three hundred copies of the entire document are going to be made available throughout the town, even if they're not mailed. So I do want residents to know that this article, while it may limit some of the information that we're going to put in there, is not going to limit what's online and available to residents and what they will have access to. So I appreciate you giving us a heads up on a potential amendment, and I would like to have further discussion about the three pages and what, has, have we looked at what it actually looks like in print? Do we know that yet?
What looks like in print, Dee?
What the zone, yeah.
No, but it's over two hundred pages.
It's over two hundred pages. So do we have any idea, like, how many, what the average page is? We don't know that yet, right? So is there a way for us to find that out before town meeting?
Maybe.
Okay.
With all the things going on before now in town meeting, I, whatever it really comes down to is this, there will be, the amendment to the bylaw is strictly for the mailing. It doesn't impact, as Ms. Tronick, Ms. Tronick said, the, what's uploaded to the website will have the full version, what is, what three hundred copies are provided throughout the town, town hall or other town buildings. So it comes down to, is it, do we feel comfortable that three's enough or ten? That's all.
Just to piggyback?
When you're mailing eleven thousand copies, I'm not sure. The difference between three and ten is going to be a huge impact. Well, I understand, but just, it could be, but it just, that's really what it comes down to.
And was there comment, because we're going to do the zoning bylaw changes, I mean, literally, you could be talking hundreds, correct? Hundreds of, hundreds of pages, potentially?
Yeah, at least two hundred, maybe more.
So my question is, how do we come up with the three? Like, where, if you didn't have, like, say, oh, this...
No science, three was just picked. It wasn't anything. I think we put a number out there and we just said three.
I, I think, and I'm just going to speak for myself, I think one of the concerns are, when it comes to zoning, one of, way back when, when I first started getting into this, my, sparked, sparked my interest in town government, there, there were some concerns about zoning, and the information that was provided to residents was not as clear and concise as, this board likes to be very transparent, and I, and I'm not saying that people try to hoodwink, I'm not, I'm just saying that it wasn't as clear as concise, and I don't want to pick a random number and have that change, and I realize that we have to do that before the next town meeting because of the thing, so I appreciate that the amendment's being brought forward, and I guess we can have discussion about that at town meeting.
Ms. Tronick, I mean, Ms. Miller, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is more of a procedural question, on background, and I apologize if the board already knows, and this is a newbie sort of question, but why are we doing all of the zoning bylaws at one meeting? Why aren't we doing it, like, you know, in sections or something?
I can't answer that exactly, but my guess is because it just, it's, it's, everything pulls together on the document, not piecemeal, so I just think it's an entire rewrite.
Well, I mean, I think...
Comes together, but I'd have to ask the committee that.
I just chime in on that. I, I believe I went to, I didn't go to all the public hearings, but I did go to a few, and I think it was the committee's intent to bring it together as a full document, and I think that that's kind of where they've been going with the public hearings, so I think that that could be something that could be brought to Steve to say, is that something that could be discussed?
Yeah, I can ask for the reason.
But I think it was their intent in terms of the public hearings. I don't know about the rest of you, have you attended any of them?
I have.
I, I've attended a couple of the meetings, I don't know if they were hearings. I, I just, if we don't have to send out two hundred pages, I think to Mrs. Tronick's point, it's better to have the full document in front of you so you can make an informed decision versus having to go get the information necessarily. But if we don't have to, if, if there's no real requirement that we have to pull it all together, I mean, I think it's something worth seeing if there's a make sense way to do it in a, in a partial manner. I know that we're going to talk about assigning people to different committees and stuff, we haven't done that yet, so, but I, I just, I don't know if we need to even send out all of it all at once, so food for thought, I don't know, down the road, or to go back and talk to the committee about. Other towns pass different changes to zoning bylaws, and they write them, and they do piggyback on each other, and they are affecting other parts of the code from time to time, but not all of it.
I can ask, I'm not sure of the reason.
Okay.
My guess is, my guess is the feeling was they needed to tie, for consistency purposes, tie it all together because...
Sure, it's a very good reason, I just don't know.
I just don't have, I just don't have, I'd have to ask them for that.
Thank you.
Last comment. My only comment is if, I, I would like to, if we're going to, I agree that if we are going to look at this in terms of how we're communicating to residents, which is why we mail out the warrant to begin with, I would like to have a better reasoning around what the number of pages is than just be like, oh, we just picked three because we thought that was a good number. And I am also thinking, when I first got my town warrant, it was half the size of what this warrant is, and I don't know if that impacts, I think the print's a little bit bigger in this one, which I like, but remember, we used to get, it used to be half this size. Now we do the printing in a, from a different, I think the high school does the printing, right? So, you know, we are saving money there, which I, I'm just saying, I, I just would like another reason why three, or if we could even have an idea.
Yeah.
So we could talk to Steve.
Yeah, well, there's not going, I'm just going, there's not going to be a science behind the number, it just isn't. I'm not going to be able to say to the board, talking to Steve isn't going to matter either.
Okay.
It's going to come down to, we'll, we'll look at previous history on what articles are, and we'll come up with a number, I just don't think I'm going to be able to say we did a statistical review.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking for a statistical review, I'm just saying a general, like, thumb through, oh, the average, you know, looking at this quick, the average is about five pages, oh, yeah, we have one that's twenty pages long, I get that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's like looking at the chart, or some articles are paragraph and other articles are pages and pages, so I, I totally understand that.
Yeah, we could come up with something.
I just...
We'll have something by town meeting.
That would be terrific, thank you.
I have no additional comments on it.
All right, I'm just going to, okay, I'll jump in quick. I'm just going to say, I think it's kind of a common sense thing, where, we're not trying to hide anything, but at the end of the day, we're going to send literally hundreds and hundreds of things, and for most residents, and me included, that's why I have a specialized committee, and experts on that committee, to help residents like me that truly don't understand the zoning bylaws, so for the average resident to read it, you know, it might not make much sense, although we're going to read it. So the point is, it's just kind of a common sense thing where we're not going to send out one hundred or two hundred or three hundred pages to residents, you know what I mean, where we will have those here, three hundred, but to Mrs. Reed, her, her point, maybe ten's a better number, it's obviously more than three, so I'll leave it at that. At a higher level, I just want to say for Ms. Reed and residents that bring not only petitions to Articles at town meeting, but also amendments, I always say this is one of the oldest forms of New England government, and I always say, you know, there's thinkers and doers in life, and for a resident to look at an article and say, you know something, I think I can make that better at a higher level for you to come in, that's very commendable, and that's what town meeting's all about, is to review the articles and to say, hey, you know something, I can think I can make this, I always say, bigger, better, faster, so at that higher level, I commend you, and, and we'll bring that, you know, we'll look forward to seeing you in front of town meeting. So I don't think we're going to make a recommendation, Ms. Reed, as to what good or bad, but at least you came, you presented it, it's on the record, and again, it's very commendable.
Mr. Chairman?
I appreciate it very much that you said that, but having been on the other side of the table, I know what it's like, if someone, you've worked on something, and then someone all of a sudden comes in, and, you know, if it's planning, it might be, you know, oh, I think a twenty-foot setback's better than twenty-five, and it becomes this arbitrary discussion on town meeting floor where it would be better to have it ahead of time if the town manager and Steve, you know, look at this, and maybe we don't need to change it. I don't have to make this, I figured that's why I would come and have a discussion with you, because it's, it's, it's an important article for the town, I totally am in favor of the concept of the article. So with that said, I would hear any other comments, if anybody has any.
Ms. Tronick?
Mr. Chairman, given the conversation, and again, I'm not looking for some analytical, but I would like to just take a look at the two hundred-page document, if you wouldn't mind, and just a quick eyeball, I would like to offer a motion to table this. We typically meet before town meeting, and I would like to offer a motion to table Article twenty-six to prior to our meeting on May sixth, if anybody would second that.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other petitioners in the audience? Please grab the microphone, please. Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mike Generis, and I live at six oh four Clark Road. I happen to notice that there is another, in a, I guess this would be the second effort to promote electronic message centers, or at least there's an article coming up in this upcoming town meeting, and I wanted to speak positively toward that point. We happen to own, my family owns a little bit of property over in that area, some residential and some heavy industrial, so I'm coming from a point of having an interest in this article, but I would also say that I'm very impressed by this article in general because this particular issue involves a great benefit, I think, to the town, as well as to anybody who happens to be in a position to have the potential of having a billboard on their land or electronic message center. I've put together a small summary of some salient points towards this discussion, and I have submitted it to the finance committee, which I, I hope, I think they probably will have that in hand by tomorrow night. I also don't know if you're interested in hearing any of this at this time?
Please do.
Would you like it?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to recognize that these electronic messaging centers are highly regulated, in case there's a question about whether or not they're sort of just put up here and there. There are federal, state, and local, in this case, we would have our, our own bylaw that addresses many of the concerns about these systems. They would only be allowed along interstates ninety-three and four ninety-five, and not along Route thirty-eight. It's been said that it's most likely that there will only be two and possibly three locations for these particular systems, which, which is quite limiting when one thinks about it, and the locations, I believe, are actually at the extremity of the town line. They're, they're virtually nearly at the border of adjoining communities. There are also, this is, this is becoming more and more a viable method of raising revenue, and so we're finding these, these electronic message centers in many of the communities along Routes four ninety-five and ninety-three at this time. I would say that the message centers generate revenues in several ways for towns. There's local taxes due to an increase in property values because of these systems, which are on the order of up to a half a million dollars per sign. There are licensing fees, annual licensing fees of approximately twenty-five hundred dollars. There are also annual host agreement payments, which are considerable. I think an example that was put, put forth recently is about fifty thousand dollars per sign per year. The signs also provide for free safety messaging and amber alerts to the communities. There's also, and this would be limited by the host agreement, but there are opportunities for municipal messaging, such as sports events and things of that nature. There's also fifteen hours, which are mandated by state law, for public service announcements on these, on these message centers, and also the basic premise that local businesses will have an opportunity to actually use the boards for advertising. So that's a brief summary of some of the salient points. I do have this copy that I'd like to give to you, if you'd like to have a look at this, and thank you for your time.
You very much. Mr. Montori did send us, for the record, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Montori, if you don't mind?
I just want to note for the record that he's talking about Article thirty-four.
Very good, I should have mentioned that.
Sorry.
Seeing, we're discussing Article thirty-four. Mr. Montori, if you don't mind, can we jump Article thirty-four?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, this is the same, similar article that was submitted at town meeting in October, and something the board had asked to have brought back to May town meeting. It addresses, as mentioned, the ability for the town to allow billboards along interstates, and it's similar to the article that the board brought forward in October with no changes.
Very good. Questions, comments from the board?
I, I will just say, any questions, comments from the board? I will just say, total, total agreement with the gentleman. I can tell you... I can tell you, as a selectman and listened to the residents after last year's meeting, it was so clear that there was a lot of confusion around what the billboards represented. I had more residents, I stood up for the vote, and they said, we're gonna have, how could you vote that we're gonna have billboards literally on Route 38? So there was so much confusion around there, and I think between the residents wanting to come to petition, and we said, listen, we're the board, we can, we can, we can put it back on the, on the warrant as an article. So I am a big fan for the revenue, and like you said, I think in this article, we kind of cleaned up a lot of information, not only through the article, but also just socializing and making the community awareness about the potential benefits versus the risks involved. And like I said, the gentleman just did a very good job of highlighting all of the pros, you know, associated with billboards. So I'll just leave it at that.
That's it. What is the motion of the board for Article 34? I have a motion.
I'll.
Mr. Stronach?
I'll make a motion to support Article 34 submitted.
I have a motion for.
To recommend adoption. Recommend adoption, I'm sorry.
Very good, no, very good. I have, it's almost getting late. I have a motion, or I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. For Ms. Miller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. Any other residents at this time, or petitioners?
Okay, what I'd like to do, Mr. Montori, is maybe we can start right from the top, and just go right through the articles, and maybe what we can do is kind of have the executive summary, and if we have to take a deeper dive from the board for questions, we can do that.
Right.
Okay, very good.
Just going through, starting at the beginning, Article 1 is standard article regarding the, the election. Moving on to Section 2, the first article, Article 2 is the salaries for elected boards and committees. The board has a pleasure on that.
Make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 2.
I have a motion, or I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Article 3 is the consent calendar, and within it, it has acceptance of the annual report, lease, the ability, the authorization of the town manager to enter lease purchase agreements, authorization to accept Chapter 90 funds, and the town's revolving funds. This is, these are all standard articles that we have in the consent calendar.
Questions from the board? It's a pleasure of the board.
I'll recommend adoption of Article 3.
I have a motion, or I have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Article 4 is the town budget. The town budget review has been finalized by the Finance Committee. The bottom line budget has not changed since it was presented to the board in January. The changes to the budget, there were no major real, anything that's, I would say, has changed since I presented it, as far as increases. From a salary standpoint, all the increases in salaries dealt with cost of living increases, longevity increases, step increases, and other contractual obligations. There are no new positions within the budget. The, there is a provision within all the budgets for an extra payroll day, because it's a 52.4 work week. In FY '20, that's within the increase. So that's on salaries, on operating side. There were no, again, significant increases to any of the budgets. All the budgets were asked to have level service budgets, and that's what the department heads did. From an operating standpoint, the big increase came in solid waste and disposal because of the increased costs that we have for recycling, and a normal increase for our trash disposal budget. Under unclassifieds, the major increase under the unclassifieds was a 6.82% increase for retirement assessment, and those were the highlights essentially of the budget. But nothing really has changed since I presented it to the board in January.
Again, so this is Article 4, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stronach?
I just would like to say that I appreciate all the work that the town manager and the departments have done. I think that over the years, we have started the process of budget earlier and earlier. I think we actually got our first budget message in November this year, and I just want people to know, I mean, this is a lot of money, and the Finance Committee also did a tremendous amount of work on this budget. And while it seems to go very quickly, I just wanna say that the pages that have been fully vetted by, I know that I spent a number of hours speaking to the town manager and Finance Committee members about this, so I just wanna note for the record that this represents almost three-quarters of a year of work from the department heads, and I appreciate that.
Observe.
Ms. Miller?
I have no questions at this time.
And, Mr. Krabman?
I'm good.
I mean, that's the thing, I just wanna recognize to the residents, Mr. Montori, this has literally been a work in progress. We've seen these numbers, we've questioned the numbers, we went through the numbers, so at this time, I don't have any particular questions, but again, I'm sure we'll address some from the residents, now that they have the handouts at home, they look at particular numbers, whether it's an increase or decrease. But again, I, we truly, going back to town meeting, that's where we have town meeting, so we can vote on this. And at the end of the day, Article 4 represents the entire budget, correct, Mr. Montori?
Correct.
Okay. But, so I have no questions, but again, we've done so much work on this. And I also would like to say, there's a FinCon meeting tomorrow for a public hearing, where they typically will go through this as well, and I know some residents, because it's a public hearing, will potentially show up. And again, they can question any particular line item, whether it's an increase, decrease, or otherwise, for Article 4. So with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board for Article 4?
I'll make a motion to approve Article 4 for adoption.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 5.
Mr. Chairman, Article 5 is the annual sewer enterprise fund budget article. The sewer enterprise budget is, we're seeking to appropriate $6,703,563. There is no sewer rate increase projected for the sewer enterprise fund. There is a projected surplus in the sewer enterprise budget. The revenue change from FY '19 to '20 is mainly due because we're projecting an increase in sewer usage, and based on the actual billing cycles that we looked at for the past year, when we finalized our sewer projections.
I'll open up to the board first, before I jump in. Questions?
I have, I don't know the comment.
Mr. Stronach?
I also would like to note, while outside of this, we also use retained earnings to take the sewer debt off of the tax levy. So I wanna recognize that, again, these are very large numbers, and this, there's a lot of work that goes on to this one little page. So I just wanna recognize and thank the department heads for working on this as well. We have tasked the town manager and his department heads with trying to make the town a little bit more affordable in ways that we can, and I just think that this is a great start, and I wanna recognize that, on top of the no increase, the tax shift of the retained earnings is a big plus for residents as well.
Mr. Chairman, that, just to piggyback on that, that's an excellent point. We are using $1,026,790 worth of retained earnings to allow for the shifting back of the $740,000 from the tax levy, and also to offset some of the increase in debt service in the sewer enterprise fund that's allowing us to keep rates at, at no increase. So that was an excellent point.
Very good.
And that's what the residents have been asking, you know, even with Water, and I know we're gonna talk about the Water Enterprise Fund, but at the end of the day, if the surplus, aka tax dollars, that we're using those tax dollars to offset, and that's exactly what we demonstrated. So I have, I have no questions.
Mr. Krabman?
No.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board for Article 5?
Make a recommendation to adopt Article 5, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 6.
Article 6 is the annual Water Enterprise Fund budget, asking to appropriate $7,162,649 being paid for by mostly user fees. There is no increase recommended for FY '20 water rates, the surplus that is being generated because of the additional revenue, and that's being, that's from usage by our water users.
Questions, comments from the board? It's a pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 7.
Article 6.
6, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I have a motion for, for adoption, to recommend adoption for Article 60. A second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 7?
Article 7 is seeking to appropriate $361,319 for the Cable Television Enterprise Fund. This revenue is from the, the cable providers, on both Verizon and Comcast, for their pay access, for the, for the pay access agreement that we have with them. We normally take in close to $600,000 a year from both, but we're only seeking to appropriate Any additional funds would just be going to retained earnings for future use.
Comments, questions from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
What's the plan for the $90,000 capital outlet?
Yeah, they're gonna make improvements to the auditorium at the high school, to allow for broadcasting events from the auditorium, upgrade all of the, the cameras, and add cameras, and upgrade any of the.
The cable, the drops and stuff, so they can run live from there? Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a question, because we get, obviously, some residents, they look at FY '18, you know, there's no expenditures, FY '19, that was approved, now we have recommendations, and the fact that we have folks finally working behind the scenes. We had a couple of great cooking shows in town that were put together, and now we have, you're doing a great job in there. So now we have resources working for us, and we're allocating some of that $600,000 to the resources that are supporting us. So I think it's very good.
Correct.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 7.
I have a motion, or I have a second.
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 8?
Article 8 is the request for borrowing of $98,503,724 for the new elementary school. School administration office is an athletic complex on the site of the Ryan School. Obviously, this is a project that's been heavily discussed, and the debt exclusion question at the local election passed, so now we need to go to town meeting to seek the authorization to borrow the funds.
Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Stronach?
I know the board's calling me, but I, first of all, I am very supportive of this article, and I do want to let the public know, prior that the Board of Selectmen voted to support this, and this was overwhelmingly supported at the ballot as well. I do think that people are, need to be aware that this is required a two-thirds vote, because it is a borrowing article, and I want to just make it, from my point of view, that we understand that this is a very expensive item, but I think the cost of doing nothing could end up costing the town more in the long run. So I do think that this is very beneficial, and I just needed to say that I am so supportive of this project, and I hope, no matter where people stand on this, they come out and have their voices heard. So I am looking forward to having the discussion at town meeting regarding this article.
Very good. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I've attended so many meetings, I've seen you speak, and your colleagues on the, on the Athletic Field Committee, and the Elementary School Building Committee have done a great job over the last few months, as well as the Friends of Committee, to really raise awareness in the community about this article, and, and the ballot question. I enthusiastically support it, speaking as a former school committee member, and having been in these schools, and having talked about these problems for the better part of a decade, it's, time has come, and we don't always get to pick the moment with MSBA that we would want to, but this is an excellent proposal. The work that's been done has been exceptionally professional and, and well-executed to this time, so I, I look forward to supporting this.
Very good. Krabman?
I have no additional comments on it.
Okay, I have no additional comments, outside of echoing my colleagues' comments of Ms. Stronach and Ms. Miller, so, oh, Ms. Stronach?
I do have one last thing. I do want to let the residents know, we are continuing to work with the abutters on this, and I believe that we have a walkthrough that is scheduled on Thursday, and we will continue to work with residents when this is supported at town meeting, if we're fortunate enough to get the townspeople to support this. That does not end the public discussion. I just want people to be well-aware that this is a project that is gonna continue to need the public's input to make it the school that we all want it to be. So I just wanna state that for the record, and I think Mr. Montori has done an excellent job of trying to make sure that people are informed, but this doesn't die at town meeting in terms of residents' input.
Very good. That says, what's the pleasure of the board for Article 8?
I'd like to recommend adoption of Article 8, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastically. I have a motion for Article 8. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 9?
Article 9, Mr. Chairman, I will be asking to be withdrawn. The bids on the Centifer Fire Station will be delayed while we work out some site issues, and we believe we'd get better pricing if it's delayed to later in the summer. And at that point, before October town meeting, we'll determine how, how much additional funding, if any, is needed.
Questions, comments from the board? Motion, take no action, or I have a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 10?
Article 10, Mr. Chairman, is gonna be amended in the handout that I gave the board, that will be provided at town meeting and online at the end of the week. On the first page is the amendment to this article. Essentially, we'll be seeking to remove from the warrant, the new rescue truck for $95,000, which will allow us to seek approval to transfer $1,264,416 from the stabilization fund for the items listed in the warrant. All of these items, Mr. Chairman, have been brought forward through the capital improvement plan that was presented to the board in February. This is, was all part of the first year of that plan, it was a five-year plan. The handout has explanations for each. Currently, right now, we have $4,740,967 in the stabilization fund. It's outlined and noted in the handout, and if this transfer is approved, that will leave us a balance of a little bit more than $3.4 million. The, I'm not sure if you want me to go through each item, or if you wanna just ask any questions, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to ask, yeah, just let's open up for questions here. Questions on Article 10? You said the stabilization fund right now sits at $4.7 million?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
The only comment that I would like to make, first of all, again, this handout that is gonna be at town meeting, I love the explanation of each individual item. There are some big-ticket items, and I'd just like to point out that the sidewalk improvements is $250,000, and that the plow truck, that is also a very big-ticket item, as well as the loader. And those are all, and then, of course, the ambulance. So I just wanna note those four items, because they're such large-ticket numbers, but that is what those kinds of pieces of equipment cost, and I want to say that I think that we're fortunate to be in a position that we can fund these without borrowing them. And I think it's really important to note that this new capital improvement plan, a few years ago, we again tasked the town manager to say, okay, rather than coming to town meeting with free cash, let's make that part of the budget process. That has gotten better and better, and this capital improvement plan, that was the first year, this year of. And this capital improvement plan, that was the first year, this year of what it is we're looking after, these one-time expenses, has been a huge benefit, first of all, in terms of planning and, second of all, in terms of being able to fund them and be proactive about the town needs, which actually translate into better services for our residents. So I'd just like to thank the town manager and his department heads because we keep going back to and say, you're good, but can you do a little bit more? And I just want to say thank you for that.
Questions, comments from the board? I'm going to jump in quickly. So as far as the new rescue truck, we're going to put that on hold. As far as the ambulance re-chassis, so I know, and I know that's tagged on the fire and that's $165,000. I do believe that we put kind of an ask into the state representative, into our state reps and senator where we have the state hospital, we make frequent calls there, we have stats, data highlighting those. So I'm okay to keep it in there. Obviously, it's a need, not a want, but could we, when the budget comes out and it happens to be in there, let's say we win, which we, hopefully we win, 165K, what would we do at that point?
So if, hopefully by June 30th, we'll have an idea if it's going to be funded within the state budget, we'll have an idea, I think, much sooner than that, once the House budget comes out because the two representatives were pushing it on their end first because that's the first budget that gets reviewed. If it does get funded, we will just not spend this money and either it can get reallocated or eventually turned back to the state, to free cash.
Okay. Okay, very good. And I know we had a discussion on the Selectmen Meeting a few weeks ago around sidewalk removal from the town. I know you and the Director of the DPW are working on a master plan that you're going to present in front of the board and the residents in a few weeks. So just as the parks, the line item, there was a question around the Ventrac Winter Machine with attachments, it's 47K, $47,393. That is not, that, we already have machines to do the sidewalks for the town. This is in addition to have one essentially for the Livingston Park areas because right now we don't do anything down there as far as no removal for the sidewalks.
Correct. So this machine isn't as heavy-duty as what you would see on the major sidewalks that we do. This will handle, with its attachments, it will do a couple of things. First, in the winter, it will take care of the ice skating rink that we have. It will also do the walkways down at Livingston because people do walk there with their dogs and we want to make sure they're clear. And then in the spring, summer, and fall months, with the attachments, we'll be able to groom the fields better than we currently do. We'll have a broom attachment to improve the grass aeration in the fields down at Livingston and at Frasca. So it's multipurpose.
Okay, very good. All right, that's all I had. And Ms. Stronach mentioned the sidewalk improvements, you know, all the allocating budget there and I think the, an example of that is around Pleasant Street of all the sidewalks that we put in that the residents have been asking when it can continue that. And so again, that's $250,000 of this ask, so I know it comes under the DPW, but I think that's a big call-out where, you know, it's a big number, but we need to do it and sustain that in Tuxbury and that's what the residents have been asking for. So I have no additional questions. That said, what is the pleasure of the board for Article 10?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 10 as amended.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 11.
Article 11 is to transfer $2,120,000 from water retained earnings to be expended on the items listed. The first is a transit van that'll be used by the Water and Sewer Department jointly. This is 50% of that cost dedicated to meter repair activities. And then the $2.1 million will be for water distribution upgrades, $2 million for actual water main replacement and $100,000 for design. The funds will primarily go to projects along Main Street and Andover Street, 133, to try to get ahead of mass DOT work that's going to happen on those roads to get the utilities done and to address any undersized mains that we have throughout town.
Okay. Is that, is impacted by the, by the winter? I know we have quite a few and I know it's a lot of money for the town, so is that, is that kind of independent or kind of not associated with what transpired last?
It's independent, but we are addressing some of the more problem areas of town.
Okay. I mean, that's the point. If we don't, we could have a nightmarish winter like we did this year. I mean, it was a mess for the town and...
With water breaks, yeah. I mean, we have, the system's old and over the next 10 years, we intend to spend, you know, this year we're going to spend $4 million on water main replacements, the years going forward, $2 million a year. And even at the end of five years, we won't touch what we need to touch.
And that was a big thing for the residents, saying, are you proactively changing these or do we always have to hole up out and wait for these things to explode, have a nightmare? This is case in point where we're being...
This year we're being proactive and if you look at the five-year plan for water, we're being proactive. And just one other point, Mr. Chairman, from a retained earnings standpoint, the water has $2.3 million in retained earnings. At this town meeting, we're going to use 2.1, a little over 2.1 million, leaving approximately $236,468. So we're using most of our retained earnings on this.
Okay.
Again, being proactive.
Correct. Ms. Stronach?
I would just like to recommend that we also talk about Article 12 with this because I think that they're accompanied articles and one is, we can't afford, you just spoke about us basically draining the retained earnings, yet we still need to do additional work at the same time. Mr. Crapman's very great at telling us about how much we have to get on top of mass DOT so we're not ripping up the roads and ripping up the roads and ripping up the roads and being cost-effective for that. So I would appreciate if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Article 12, to that point, is...
Oh, why don't you just take a motion on Article 11?
Sure. I'll make a motion to adopt Article 11 as presented.
I have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Let's jump into Article 12.
Article 12, as Ms. Stronach mentioned, is a continuation of work we're doing on the water distribution system. The $2 million will be a borrowing of funds. It's all figured into the rates for next year and over the next five years. The $2 million will primarily address water main replacement in the West Tuxbury area on Woburn Street, Park Street, Elm Street, Highland Ave, Greenwood, and North Billricka Road. And then in the south section of town on South Street from McLaren Road to Brown Street. And then if there are any additional funds, we'll continue to address undersized pipe. Those are the main areas we'll target with that $2 million.
Okay, so this, I'm sorry, I'll open up to the board for comments, questions?
I would just like to make a comment. These, I think this is a great article. We have the DPW Director in front of us and all the locations that you mentioned have had numerous breaks out there, especially Salem and Brown. I apologize to the residents that it takes us this long to get them to get fixed, but once again, you have to plan and get these things done properly. I know it's broken out there many times, but pretty much every location that you've mentioned that we've had a water break and even when you repair that one water break, it breaks five feet down the street or 10 feet down the street. So these are something that we must do, we must plan ahead. So I think this is a great article to adopt.
And I know we talked about borrowing versus transferring. We just talked about Article 11 and Ms. Stronach's point where it's transferring. At the end of the day, Article 12 is a borrow because we need to do it and was part of the capital plan and that. So there is an associated increase to the residents, correct?
Correct.
Discuss that. Any additional questions for Article 12?
I was just curious what the rate impact was going to be. I think it's been presented to you already.
So for FY, let me just go there right now. For FY '20, there's no, no increase. For FY '21, '22, and '23, and '24, there's projected to be 4% increases, but obviously that could change.
Right.
FY '25, '26, '27, and '28, and '29, 2% increases. And that's as far as, and '30, 2% increase.
Yeah, okay. After next year, because this borrowing will happen in FY '20?
Yes. Our $2 million a year going forward over the next 10 years.
Okay.
That's what's factored into the rates coming up.
Just to clarify, in that, from my recollection of the presentation, that percentage rate includes that borrowing projected into it. Just want to make sure that if anybody isn't watching the Bruins game and they're watching this...
And that's based on current usage. And so things could change depending on the amount of usage, you know, over the years.
Yep.
And if we seem, if we have more retained earnings than we do now, which hopefully we do, we'll be able to use a combination of borrowing and retained earnings and that would help the 4% increase possibly to go down. So we'll adjust and look at it every year, but that's where we are.
And we talked about that during, you know, during one discussion here about if there's additional retained earnings, just like we did here in FY, in FY '20, we're going to use those retained, returned earnings. I mean, that's kind of been the direction of the board.
Correct.
So, okay. That being said, any other questions, comments for Article 12? Pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 12.
I have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we jump, I just want to jump back quickly, quickly to Article 10 and I just want to make a call-out. There was a particular line item there for Vernon, for Vernon at Water Street for a drain design. That's been ongoing for years and years and years and years up there. I mean, it's just a low-level part of the town and I know the residents up there, so they're going to try to get some relief. I just think that's money overdue, you know, this is long overdue, so I just wanted to make that call-out because I know residents have been very patient with the town, so that's a good spend. So...
That's just to the design and the specifications. Once we understand the cost, we'll bring that back for additional funds.
Correct. I mean, but it has to be done. It's a swamp up there and enough is enough. It's been like that for years. Okay. That being said, why don't we jump to Article 13?
Article 13 is a transfer from sewer retained earnings of $20,000 for the sewer enterprise budgets, a portion of that, the cargo van that I mentioned earlier for the meter reader. Sewer retained earnings has $5.1 million in the fund, as I mentioned earlier, where we're going to use about $1,260,000 to help offset debt. We're going to use $20,000 on this article, which leaves $4,607,300. And that's, that's going to be used over the next seven years to offset debt and to allow us to not have to shift that $740 on the tax levy. And all of these figures, just sort of knows that I'm rattling off, they're going to be in the handout for town meeting.
Questions, comments on Article 13? What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 13.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 14.
Article 14 is an article we've had on for the last few years utilizing a bond premium from a 2016 bond refinancing. The amount that we're going to utilize this year is $60,591.08 and what we do with it reduces the existing town exempt debt principle.
Questions, comments from the board? I mean, for this one, Mr. Montori, the saying goes, there's never enough?
Yes.
There's never enough, but we're taking action. Right, there's never enough, but we're taking action. Okay. Good, that was my only comment. That said, what's the pleasure of the board for Article 14?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 14.
I have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 15.
Article 15 is, the article itself's been a standard article for the last six or seven years, but the amount has changed. We're seeking to transfer $52,500 from the overlay surplus to fund the sewer tax relief program and the veterans' tax relief program. In the past, we've asked to transfer $25,000 from the overlay surplus. We've increased the amount because the $1,500 maximum that we have for seniors or veterans to, as a cap for service, voluntary service to different offices in the town, this will allow us to fund about 35 individuals if they use the full amount. We average about 30 to 32 because not everyone goes to the full cap, but this will at least guarantee 35 that go to the full max. The overlay surplus, this is an amount of money that's determined by the assessors to be available to spend. The actual overlay itself, not the overlay surplus, but the overlay itself, has about $4.3 million in it.
What's that, I'm sorry?
$4.3 million. And the assessors have that as they, for abatements and exemptions that they provide. And it's been cumulative over the years and they have certain cases and valuations that they're still working out that are going to come from, that'll, that'll hit that $4.3 million, but there may be some of that available in the future for other use by the town.
Questions, comments from the board?
My only, I mean, I love this article. I say that every year. I am appreciative of the increase to the cap and while this guarantees 35, I think that that's what we maxed out at last year and it varies. So I just, I don't know how we do outreach to get people to understand how to tap into this, but I like to see the increase, so thank you.
Very good. Money well spent. What's the pleasure of the board for Article 15?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Miller?
I want to also say that I'm glad that the figure's been increased. Is there enough work for folks to do to get to that max in terms of hours?
We, sometimes we have troubles, we have more applicants than we do work.
Yeah.
So, and that's for a couple of reasons. Sometimes we have work that the individuals who apply either can't do or don't want to do. For instance, we could have someone clean buildings...
Right.
...all the time, but not everyone wants to do that. We have data entry, but not everyone's proficient in using a computer. So it does, we do, we do struggle to find work, but we're going to get creative and see if we can place people, everyone that does apply.
I thank you for that. It's an important article. My only concern about, or my biggest concern about senior tax relief is for the folks that can't really, can't really do the work. And then these are sometimes more of our, our more infirm folks, so it will be good to continue that conversation that you had a few weeks ago with the board. So I look forward to more discussion on that, but I support, this is great.
Good call-out. That being said, is it a formal motion?
Make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 15.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 16.
Article 16 is a standard article to approve the Affordable Housing Trust Allocation Plan. You know, the starting balance is $4,836,742 and the expenses, we projected the same amount for the creation of new units and buy-down of existing units.
Questions, comments? It's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a...
Go right ahead.
Nope, go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 16.
I'll second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 17.
Article 17 is the, is voting to appropriate a reserve of the Community Preservation Fund, the annual revenues. This is a standard article each year. This year, the administrative cost that we're seeking approval for to have set aside is As far as the reserves, we're seeking to set aside $102,617.05 for open space, $102,617.05 for community housing. We don't set aside any funding for historic preservation because that money goes directly to pay for the debt on the renovation of the town hall. And then the FY '20 budget of reserve is $769,000. We're projecting revenue based on our surcharge to be $1,26,170.46.
A motion to recommend adoption of Article 17. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Now, for Article 18, 19, and 20, I know they have to do with the Community Preservation Committee. Do you want to take them separate or want to do all three at the same time? Again, that's Article 18, 19, and 20.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, first of all, note that the Community Preservation, I believe, supported all of these articles. That's correct? And I would like to make a motion to take 18, 19, and 20 and defer to the Community Preservation Committee at town meeting.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.[1772.83] Aye, unanimous. Brings us to Article 21.
Article 21 is an article that was previously presented to town meeting unsuccessfully that the board has talked about bringing back when they reviewed speed limits with the Department of Public Works, and it's asking for the acceptance of provisions of Chapter 90, Section 17(c) of the Mass General Laws. And it provides the Board of Selectmen with the ability to establish 25 mile per hour speed limit, limits in thickly settled and business districts throughout the town. And it allows them to do that without having to go to Mass DOT for, with the study. So it really cuts down the work that we have to do and gives more authority to the Board of Selectmen.
Questions or comments from the board?
I mean, I remember when this didn't pass at town meeting. I'm glad we're bringing it back. I think it makes sense. It's not about giving more power necessarily to the Board of Selectmen, but to improve the ability of the town to pivot and react to what's happening in the community. There's definitely, I live on Shawshin Street, and it's absolutely NASCAR out there sometimes trying to get out of my driveway. It's 40 miles an hour in front of my driveway, so it's really dangerous. So I think, I don't know if Shawshin Street would apply in this particular case, but I think it's a good tool for the community to be able to use.
Agreed. I mean, technically speaking, now, we have some studies for our major roadways, right? I mean, technically speaking, we have some studies that we can certainly leverage, and they're kind of fresh off the press.
Right. We do have, we did studies in areas we knew regardless of this would need studies, but this would give the board a little bit more flexibility and the ability to address areas that are concerned when it comes to speed limits. Now, that doesn't mean the board wouldn't want some type of study done, but the study doesn't have to be sent to Mass DOT for approval. The board can keep that internal.
Exactly, and holding our breath for, for years on times where we can engage our own engineers in the town if residents come forth and say, hey, wait a minute, you know, it's a 45 here, 35 here. It gives us the power to act swiftly, like I'm going to say what Ms. Miller said, to pivot quickly and adjust very quickly. So, okay. Any other questions, comments for Article 21?
I have a, I have a couple of comments on.
Mr. Crapman.
Other than taxes and sidewalks, I would say this is probably one of the number one calls I get in the community. And I think this is very, very important for the residents to listen to this. It's, we're not the only community. I mean, a number of the surrounding communities have adopted this, and Landover has, a number of towns around us have. And I know a lot of residents called to me and said, they did it, why can't we? And so I don't think they, a lot of people read through the article to see what this was about. Not only does this give us the ability to change in what the recommendations of our traffic experts, but it saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars in years of time for us to do this. For each traffic study that we have to do, it's somewhere between the amount of $50,000 to $80,000 for us to submit something to Mass DOT, just to change a speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour, or something of that ability to do so. And a lot of times, when you submit something to Mass DOT, it goes the other way, because they go by the 80 percentile. So if vehicles are traveling at a rate of, if you've got a speed limit of 30 miles an hour, and every car is doing 40 miles an hour down that road, then they will actually raise the speed limit up to 35. I know we got a number of calls in the previous year, year and a half about us raising the speed limits on certain roads, which we actually did not do. What happened was, is that it came to our attention that at some point, speed limit signs were put up that did not meet what Mass DOT had approved. So there were some roads that had 40 mile an hour speed limits that were approved by Mass DOT because they went by the 80 percentile. And years ago, either by residents complaining or something happened that, I'm guessing a DPW or somebody put up signs that said 30 or 35 miles, somebody argued against the case, and then they, they made us go and put the speed limits back to what they were. So if the state mandates that it has to be 40, then we have to go by that. This gives us the ability to actually make common sense changes, especially on roadways where there's poor sight distance, there's schools, there's senior facilities where people are crossing the roadway. We have a lot of more traffic in this town. This is a common sense thing that came in. The governor actually passed this to the Mass Municipal Act, so I think this is a great article for us to adopt, and I hope everybody comes to town meeting to help us with this.
And just to Mr. Crapman's point, to drop the microphone, these are our roads, not the Commonwealth roads. These are our roads, and I'll leave it at that. So what's the pleasure of the board for Article 21?
Well, make a motion to adopt Article 21.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 22.
Article 22, again, is similar article to 21. We brought it forward, and it did not pass. We, we talked about, discussed bringing it back, and it currently allows for the creation of safety zones to be established by the Board of Selectmen and not having to conduct a traffic study to do so. So again, it, it cuts some of the red tape, so to speak, that needs to be done by doing this.
Questions from the board?
I don't think anybody wants to hear me again, but I will make, I'll make a motion to adopt Article 22.
I will second that enthusiastically.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 23.
Article 23 is seeking the approval, this is, this is from the Local Housing Partnership, and they're seeking approval, right, from town meeting to authorize a selectmen to sell the parcels of land that are listed so they can build two affordable homes.
Now, is this, was this from the Local Housing Partnership here, this Article 23 for recommendation?
Yes.
That is correct.
Very good.
And they, they did support this unanimously.
Awesome. Okay, very good. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve Article 23.
Recommend adoption for Article 23. Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Article 24.
Article 24 is, again, seeking, with our town meeting's approval, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell a parcel of land that is at 283 Pleasant Street. For those of you who may drive up and down Pleasant Street, it's the old greenhouses. And we'd like to sell that parcel of land for, for either market rate or affordable housing. It's something that we can talk about as we move forward, because it is a valuable piece of land. Probably can get two houses on it. And we want to clean it up because it's becoming a real dangerous area. The land itself, we hesitated to send anybody on it that works for the town because of the broken glass and the hazards of going on there to clean it up. Neighbors have called complaining of the overgrowth that's affecting their fences and yards that we've hired private contractors to go in and clean up. So this is just an area that we would like to clean up and get addressed.
If we take action on this particular article here, 24, to recommend adoption, would it ever potentially come back to town meeting, annual town, special town meeting? Because we're doing another, something else with it as opposed to what?
No, as long as we, we do it for either market or affordable housing purposes, the board can move forward.
Okay. Comments from the board? It's the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 24.
I have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 25.
Article 25 is an article that the Finance Committee has to bring forward just to amend the bylaw that governs the Finance Committee, because there are, best way to describe it, antiquated notification requirements within the bylaw that they wanted to delete from the bylaw. Right now, the bylaw requires 72 hours notice of meetings, which is just not needed, and they wanted it by, and it says by mail. So with email and the communications that we have today is just not needed.
So this is from the Finance Committee?
It's from the Finance Committee.
Okay. Questions? Recommendation from the board?
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 25.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 26, we tabled Article 26, so we're going to move to Article 27. And this, we talked about this, we talked about this.
So now we can go back to that. So Winterbury, the requirement that is to notify the abutters on the street, because, because it's not an accepted road, the abutters, the owners of the property, the house lots, they technically own the street. Subdivision. So they need to be notified that we're doing the street. They were notified.
They were notified.
Yes.
So does that, okay, let's, let's pause there for a second momentarily, because we had an item at 720 to, street acceptance requests, Winterbury Lane, and there was the question of if the abutters were notified.
And by definition of the abutters being the people on the street, yes, they were.
Correct. So do we want to jump back? So do we have a motion for the street acceptance request going back to our scheduled items for Winterbury Lane?
I did. I was in the middle of a motion, and I will be happy to complete that. Pursuant to, having compiled the statutory requirements by conducting a public hearing after notifying the abutters, the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21 through 24, and Mass General Law, Chapter 79, Section 1 and 2, lays out in Winterbury Lane as a public way, accepted said way, and any related drainage, water, sewage, facilities, or easements, all shown on the plan in the profile entitled "Street Acceptance Plan of the Land," dated January 12, 2018, by LJR Engineering, Inc., which plan and profiles have deemed satisfactory. And I will make that in the form of a motion to accept the public outlay of Winterbury Lane.
I'll second that.
Very good. That was good. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So now we're going to jump back.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Amory. How about Article 27 now? So we just kind of said the same thing in a not, in a long about way, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to recommend adoption.
Motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Crapman.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous for Article 27. Brings us to Article 28.
Mr. Chairman, this is a petition or article to repeal the prohibition on single-use packs.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to take no action on this, as it is being brought forward by a resident. I would have done that with Mr. Kuko's article, as I've done with the other articles, but Mr. Kuko, we just accepted that land, so.
I have a motion to take no actions?
Well, what about doing something like?
Well, it's going to be brought forth. It's going to be brought forth in the annual town meeting in two weeks, so, you know, I think it's, what was your thought process?
I can make a motion to recommend indefinite postponement. It's a negative motion. It's designed to kill the article. So, but that would just be the recommendation from the board. It kind of gets in the weeds a little bit, you know? I don't know what the pleasure of the board is. Taking no action is certainly it.
Well, Ms., we'll start with this. Ms. Amory, do you have a motion on the floor?
I do. I have a motion to take no action on Article 2.
I have a motion to take no action. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's 35%? Aye? Aye? Opposed? Unanimous? Okay. And that's unanimous. And it goes back, and to your point, whether you're for it or against it, goes back, you know, we saw Ms. Nancy Reed come in, you know, if a resident comes with an article or an amendment, you know, that's designed for town government, whether you like it or not. You know, this resident is taking those steps, so, but I understand your point as well, so. Very good. Article 19. I'm sorry, Article 29.
Article 29 is really a resolution from a private resident, from a resident.
Okay. Same deal there. So what's the pleasure of the board for Article 29?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to take no action on Article 29.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, Mr. Montori, I think, I think, I do believe that's it, correct?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman. Well, special town meeting.
Okay. And we'll turn to the special town meeting warrant. I think we don't have, I think we have a few there to discuss. So why don't we move right into there? I think we have Article 1.
Article 1 is just a transfer within the FY 19 budget to address budgets that are projected to have deficits or in need of funding, and we're taking money from articles or budgets that are projected to have a surplus in them by the end of the fiscal year. It's a standard article we have in May to address current fiscal year budget, budget issues. The handoff at town meeting explains the items, the areas of the budget that are being funded, and explains the area of the budgets that have surpluses.
Questions, comments, Article 1? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 1.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 2?
Article 2 is transferring $600,000 for snow and ice deficit for FY 19. We had a snow and ice deficit in FY 19, as we did in FY 18, but the, but the deficit in FY 18 was much higher than we did this year. The $600,000 is going to be broken up as follows. $116,000 for snow and ice salaries, which is mainly overtime, and then snow and ice operating, which is for private contractors and any of the sand and salt supplies and maintenance that we have for our snow and ice operations, was $423,435. And then in addition to that, and this wasn't really part of, this isn't part of the deficit, but we're seeking $60,565 to be transferred into capital outlay. So before the end of the fiscal year, the, the Public Works Department can purchase an additional sidewalk plow to assist with sidewalk plowing and maintenance. This will be a more heavy-duty plow than we talked about earlier for the POCs. This will give us the opportunity not to have to rent a sidewalk plow in the, during the winter months, but in fact, have one on hand all the time that will assign someone to, to address sidewalks.
And how many would that be for, I know we're going to talk, like I said, we're going to, we're going to talk about the sidewalk plan.
Just for the DPW, that would be three.
Three, okay. And I'm sure we'll talk about that, like I said, not in the, the next meeting following the annual town meeting, as far as the sidewalk plan. And I just had a quick question, I think. I know folks said it wasn't that snowy this year. However, I know we had a lot of ice problems. But at the end of the day, I think the cost this year was a little bit less than previous year, the previous year, correct?
It was, and, and it's, you know, I know people determine the amount of our cost to the amount of inches of snow, but it really is the timing of the storm, you know, the, the length of the storm, but also you can have very little snow, but a lot of situations are icing, and we're sending out sanders and things like that. So, and when you call people in, so each year is just as different. Can't go just by the number of inches of snow.
Agreed, okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? Article 2? Share the board?
Make a motion to adopt Article 2.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Article 2.
Then Article 3, again, is a typical article we've had at special town meeting, either in the fall or in the, in May, for unpaid bills. We're going to transfer funding from our property and liability insurance, which is projected to have a surplus, to fund an occupational medicine bill that came in after the fiscal year, and an additional assessment that we had for middle sex retirement, for the, for the middle sex retirement system for employees that have been deployed for military service.
Questions, comments, Article 3?
Make a motion to recommend.
Second.
Second.
Second for Ms. Amory. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, thank you, Mr. Montori. I know, you know, we just went through a lot. It does take time, and like I said, this has been fluid. We've been working through this for the calendar year, but there's a ton of work involved here, and I'm looking forward to residents showing up at town, annual town meeting and having, like, questions.
And, Mr. Chairman, just two quick things on town meetings. So the, the warrant has been mailed. Everyone should have received one. The warrant is on the website, both annual and special town meetings. The handout will be on the website at the end of the week, and I'd encourage people to take their mailed warrants with them to town meeting, or if they want to download the handout and bring that to town meeting, because we will have copies, but this, we anticipate to be a large town meeting, and I can't predict how many will have avail, will print enough, that we think is enough, but people should bring the information with them, if they could.
Very good. Mr. Crapman?
I was just thinking, that's an excellent point. Thank you, Mr. Montori. I'd like to take the minutes from Mr.
I got one more, Adam. Tom Andrew reports.
Brian's.
Okay, we'll jump that. You got one invoice, Mr. Montori?
Yes, just one invoice for Town Council from March 16, 2019 through March 31, 2019, in the amount of $2,550, and I would recommend approval by the board.
I'll recommend approval as presented by Town Manager for Town Council invoice. I'll recommend approval as presented by Town Manager for Town Council invoice.
I was going to say recommend adoption because we went too many times. That was good. All right, you caught it. I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Ms. Stronach is going to be nice to Mr. Brian Dick, who was home very, very sick.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 8, 2019, as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Can't vote on them.
Technically, we changed the rules, you can, but that's absolutely fine. We have a quo.
Oh, you changed the law?
Yeah, if you read it, but no, that's a-okay. So we do have a, we have a quorum, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's three, three, three oh, and that's the same. Okay, very good. It brings us down to board member reports. Mr. Kravman?
Uh, yeah, I want to keep it short and sweet. Lowell Regional Transit meeting Thursday, so we'll have that. But I do want to bring something up. I wanted to thank our town engineer, our DPW director, people working together. I stopped by tonight and I got a call from the director of the Lowell Regional Transit Board, and Bus Shelter is coming and is going to be installed at the senior housing facility on Livingston Street. Our town, in coordination with our town engineer and DPW, we put a pad on both sides of the street there. We put a new crosswalk out there in conjunction with the new lights that are going out there. And there was a townwide helping. We got a number of calls from residents that were in fear of getting off the buses there. And when you got off on one side of the street, there was no place to drop somebody off in wheelchairs or somebody crossing the street. There was no, there was no handicap ramps, and there was no crosswalk there. Now, it's been installed recently by town. They put them out there. And the bus shelter, I was told, could be arriving this week or next week, the latest. But the pad is there. It's all installed. The residents, I'm sure, will be very happy with that, to be able to cross out there safely. So I want to thank everybody who would help with that. The beautification committee is meeting. We have a meeting coming up next week. And the town, the Economic Development Committee is meeting at the beginning of next month, so we really have nothing new to talk of that.
Ms. Stronach?
When we last met, I was not able to report on the housing partnership because we were having a meeting that night. We did go down. There is a proponent who is looking to do something on the old police station. I do want people to know that the work that's being, that it looks like there's work being done at the police station, but it is actually not being done by the residents. You want to clean me up here?
Yeah, so the, the, what's happening on that lot is just a staging area for the work going on on Route 38.
Yep. So I just want to make that clear for people so that they're not confused. We have not taken any action on that project. It is staging. Thank you for that clarification. There is no elementary building committee meeting this Thursday. I just want to make it clear, but we are meeting with the abutters, and that's not the whole committee. It's Town Manager, and there are, I know that I'm going to try to make it, and I believe the chairman's going to try to make it too, but I do want that, there's no meeting. It's at 5 o'clock?
Meeting at 5.
5 o'clock. And then the events committee is getting well underway for the baseball and the Fall Festival. I do not have dates, but I will have them for our next meeting. And I just want to make sure that people know that this is a very important town meeting, as they all are, but we have a lot of really important decisions to make at this one in particular. And did we talk about whether or not there's, I mean, I know that there's going to be a lot of parking, there's a lot of parking on site, but if people do need to park, there's always the Ryan, and it's a quick walk.